Okay, welcome to the Shastberry Select Board. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman. I'm calling this meeting to order on Monday, May 16th, 2016. Does anyone on the Select Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
First up is approval of minutes. Minutes were circulated for our meeting on May 2nd. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion, amendments, or corrections to the minutes for May 2nd?
I just have a comment. Can we go to 15 Newtown Garage? Third paragraph.
What did I say?
It was mentioned that a bidder would have to buy the plans. I know that was said, but at the time, we never discussed it, and I think we've got to discuss it today, all right? I just want to put it on the agenda to make sure we discuss whether that's what we want to do or not.
Okay.
Dave made the comment, so I know it's right, but I just think we've got to discuss it, because that hadn't come up before. Okay?
Okay. Let's remember to take that up.
We're going to be talking about Morton anyways.
Right. Yeah, Morton in the town garage is up here on item 10.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion, changes, corrections?
That's all I had.
All in favor of approving the minutes for May 2nd as circulated, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes for May 2nd are approved, 5-0-0. We have water board minutes for May 2nd also.
Motion to approve water board minutes for May 2nd.
Motion to approve from Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? I'll just mention that when I was reviewing the minutes, I caught an action item that we missed last time to review the proposed changes in the water board regulations in anticipation of a special meeting on June 2nd, so we need to make sure those get circulated.
You're in the drop-ups.
You must have just put them there.
Or maybe I sent them by...
Oh, maybe they weren't in today's folder.
Yeah, yeah, not in today's folder.
Okay, good.
They're there. I'll check where it is. Maybe I sent them on the email list. I'll check.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes for the water board meeting on May 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, 5-0-0.
Yeah, you just sign those, yeah.
I have a retirement warrant number 23, the amount of $175.81.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Retirement warrant number 23, in the amount of $175.81, is approved, 5-0-0. I have a check warrant number, I think that says, it says 36, to Burton J. Snow, delinquent tax, $871.38.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. This is...
It's an accounting correction.
Okay.
It was accredited to water instead of taxes.
Okay, an accounting correction. Very good. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Check warrant number 36, in the amount of $871.38, is approved, 5-0-0. Payroll warrant number 23, in the amount of $16,596.20.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant number 23, in the amount of $16,596.20, is approved, 5-0-0. And finally, check warrant number 37, in the amount of $19,000, sorry, $39,303.19.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Major items here are $2,100 to Bennington County Regional Commission.
That's the SWIP agreement.
SWIP.
Sure portion of it.
Okay.
B-C-S-W-A.
B-C-S-W-A.
$10,000 to Morton Buildings for the plans for bidding that we've been talking so much about. $1,800 to Mountaineer Assessors.
That's the town assessor, Jim Boyle, the town assessor, regular payments.
Right. $10,000 to Perrin Acres, our contribution to the new lake house there that we approved. $1,900 to Sycamore Landscaping for May cemetery maintenance. $6,300 to TAM for April transfer station charges. And the rest are all under $1,000. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Check warrant number 37, in the amount of $39,303.19, is approved, 5-0-0. Your pen back, I promise.
Did we sign the water thing?
Oh, the minutes? Yeah, okay.
Just so everybody can find out, I put the rules and regs in the June 2nd folder now, six for the next meeting, so everybody knows where you are.
Are there any announcements? Shastberry's Ordinary Hero will be June 4th at the Galusha Homestead, 2 to 4. Come on up and support Shastberry's 2016 Ordinary Heroes. Very good. Any others?
One more. Yesterday, we had a nice event with the Palino Historical Society at the Galusha Homestead. We had a high tea with all the accoutrements, and it was very nice. We had about 20 people there, it was nice. Just give it a shout-out.
It's probably worth mentioning that we're still trying to fill vacancies on the Planning Commission and DRB. Those are advertised on the website with job descriptions, so if anyone is interested in serving the town in those capacities, please send a letter of intent, or a letter of interest, to the town administrator, which can be as simple as an email, saying, "I'd like to serve on this board or that board."
Just in regards to that, are you posting that in public places also, in case you don't have a computer?
We can.
We...
There's a lot of people in Shastberry who don't have a computer.
Good suggestion, yeah. Let's post those in our usual spots. Thank you. Any public comments?
Yes.
Mr. Court.
I understand the board wanted to get the word out that the town garage is saved up there. I think I'm sorry. I just like to put it up there on Crawford's old garage to point to the site with the board's permission.
I don't think, we don't know.
Yeah, we're still in the throes of decision about the site. We have two candidate sites. I think it would be premature at this point to advertise A site as D site.
No, I said proposed.
Yeah, we haven't even gotten as far as proposing yet. We're still evaluating candidate sites.
I understood from, must be the banner was wrong, they said that you were working, you were going to do that proposed site down over the bank.
We are still deciding between the site down over the bank and the site up close to the road. Both of those are, we're going to be talking about that tonight, in fact.
That's why he's here.
Yeah, not that wasn't what I, that wasn't the interpretation I got.
Yeah, no, we haven't settled on one or the other yet.
Or both.
Yeah.
Or both, yeah. We are also considering building on the upper site and salt shed on the lower side. So, I think it's still, too much is up in the air to say we, to call anything the site, or even the proposed site.
And if I got my choice, the lesser of the two evils is definitely the upper site.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Oh, the only other comment I really like to flag is on Main Street.
Thank you. You have...
Or you got your flag up there. It looks wonderful up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if memory serves, Karen Mellinger, we have to thank for that, that she bought those flags a few years ago, right?
I'd be more than happy if I can just cut that off and put it up there.
Yep.
Okay?
Just give me a call.
Okay.
Because I do want people to know that's definitely the site up there somewhere.
Okay.
Yep, when we decide, we'll be telling everybody who'll listen.
Yeah. I'm already, as you say, a man special, so I can just cut it off.
If there are no other public comments, we're ready for our Treasurer, Melanie Dexter.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
I think the report, yeah. Oh, that's not the...
I updated one today, so you have to go to the other one. It got changed with a few debotes.
I mean, it's just, it's very similar, just a little...
Yeah, it's in the drop box under report two.
Little bit more money came in.
This is report two.
Yeah, that's it. As I always say in these halfway-through-the-month meetings, it's not terribly informative to look at a cash flow when you don't have a close month, but for what it's worth, there it is. We continue to be in a strong position, both with the budget and with cash flow. We're doing great. It's another very, very boring report. Do you have any questions about any of this? It's kind of, we got it down to a routine now.
Just keep the boring reports coming.
Oh, yeah, that's...
We like that.
That's my dream, is to be as boring as possible.
The Moore Street transfer is for a payment on the land we bought last year.
That was, yeah, that was a payment that came, that we made, and it came out of the checking account, so that's just a transfer to make the checking account whole, so you would have seen that went through probably last month. So, this is just a transfer to get the money in the right place, from the reserve account. Anything else?
Well, it looks like we're very close to, at least fractionally, where we were in the budget last year. I guess we're a little ahead on revenues this year, it looks like.
Yeah, very slightly. I haven't looked at that in any detail, but as you can see, we're ahead on delinquent taxes, so some of that is just, I think it's real, and I think some of it's just that extra cash that's come in.
Okay.
And did we want to talk about the Assistant Treasurer issue now?
I was going to bring that up later.
Okay.
I'd rather do that, it's a personal one.
Okay, so, any other questions?
Not for me. For the board, I would just like to run, we are going to have, we're going to ask the board to have a special meeting to sign a warrant to pay some bills, because it's a long time till the next meeting.
Oh, that's right.
It's not till June 6th, so probably around May 30th, that way we can close the month.
Yeah.
We'd just like to have a special meeting. The board can agree at a convenient time for at least three or four of you to come. We can do it anytime that's convenient, because that'll be the only thing on it, is just to sign a warrant. Otherwise, it gets too long in between...
It's five Mondays, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gets too long in between meetings, and the bills become overdue, so...
Yeah, I mean, two weeks from today, same time, same station, is probably where...
Well, do you want to come in at this time? It will be like a five-minute meeting. It's the only thing we'll do.
Two weeks from today is Memorial Day.
That's Memorial Day.
Yeah, so you want to do it like on Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
Let me see the calendar here. There's my calendar there. Yeah, like Tuesday, the 31st, and then we can close the month on the next day.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Anytime you want to set for that?
I'd do it before supper.
We can. Have to miss golf if we do it before supper.
Sorry.
I can do that once.
It's going to rain, it always rains. Mitch, could you be here at 5:00?
It'll be tough, we'll see.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30. Try to be, give me an excuse to try to fail out of work.
5:30, okay. Make it 5:30.
Does the morning work better for anybody?
Tuesday, day after holiday.
Yeah, day after holiday, yeah.
About 6:00 or 5:00.
5:30 Tuesday, the 31st, then.
31st.
And that'll be posted as just to sign the warrant.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Okay. I understand our road foreman is not feeling well today.
Yeah, he was pretty ill today, so probably won't be in tomorrow either, but basically, they're too great as route as often as we can get. The weather, hopefully, will start improving. We did get the award, and we'll show, we'll have a bid this evening for East Road to pave that this year. Airport Road was turned down again, but because we have money that's going to be available from our winter sand, from the salt that we have left over, and the leftover salt budget which carries forward, because that doesn't roll into the general fund, because it's a highway fund, so we'll have enough money to do work on Airport Road anyway. Maybe not the full extent we wanted to, because that was going to be about $70,000, $80,000, but after two years in a row of getting that turned down by the state, I think we just need to at least do the cider mill, and I'll talk with Steve about this, and we'll go over the plan, but the area from cider mill headed towards the railroad tracks as much as we can, and just try and draw the road in, and it needs some drains, and there's this whole little plan we had that we'll have to scale back now, but we can take care of the harder parts. Again, I've heard that it's not going to be heavily used this year by the trucks, because they're not going to be taking a lot of material out of there, so if that pans out, the road stays a lot better, but it has many issues. It was unfortunate it was turned down by the state again, but we'll do the best we can. But we'll do East Road from the conclusion point last year down at the Furnace Brook. Now, I need one more thing from the state, but we'll put the bid out. There may be, in all the bidding, because they'll rent different equipment from different people, if we have all our jobs clustered together, we might get some additional savings, because we already need a reclaim for over here, we need a reclaim for over on East Road, so we'll see what we can work out. And all the work might be done earlier this year if the scheduling all falls right, because if it starts in the end of June, I'll have this year and next year's money, and we can just do everything quickly.
Okay.
Other than that, they've just been doing the ditching, and like I said, getting the roads ready, doing the grading as much as they can. Of course, the weather's been a little bit difficult at times, and hopefully, they'll just continue with that.
Do you happen to know, or maybe one of these guys that drives the same streets I do, because I didn't see, did they put material on Horton Hill, or was that just grading?
Just grading. He graded it today and chloridated it today.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't have a lot more to say about the roads, because Steve called about 4:30, quarter to 5:00, and said he was out chloriding late, and he had to go home. He was ill, so I didn't have much time to check with him on a bunch of things.
No other questions on the road, we'll move on to item 9. David Newell was going to talk to us about insurance.
I want to talk, is on the agenda anything about the contract for snow plowing, that sort of stuff, the meeting we had?
No, but we can certainly talk about that.
We want to do it now, or...
Yeah.
Or that or other business.
That or other business, yeah.
It's road business, let's talk about it now.
Yeah. You want me to?
We talked about putting out the bid, contracting some of the roads, and in the meantime, Dave and Norm Blank got together, Norm is this road foreman for North Bennington. We had a meeting last week, and they have an extra truck, but no driver, and they have budgeted three days a week for a year for that position in that truck. So, it might work if we work together and could use that person for two days a week. Obviously, it would probably be a week at a time, or maybe it doesn't mean that we have to take that person for two weeks. If they can hire the right person, they have an extra truck, and in their budget, they have three days a week for a year.
Yeah. Running the numbers quickly, it seems to put us at a little bit of a disadvantage, but I don't want to make any final decision. We can go back and forth on this. Anytime we can share something that's going to add value to both communities would be worthwhile, in my opinion. But pricing out the truck, because as Norm mentioned about using FEMA rates to try and make, because if we loan them a piece of equipment, we have to have a way of charge, and FEMA has a set scale for each piece of equipment. Paying for the plow truck, even though one ton, that comes in about $40,000 to $50,000 an hour, and then you add a person on top of that, now if we pay their regular rate with all the add-ons, it's going to not be fully to our advantage, the way we were talking, which doesn't mean there isn't a lot more to discuss. But it could be a way to fill out some of our issues, which could be the water person, the parks person, helping the cemetery, there's a number of issues we still have to hold out here, but it was an interesting discussion that we'll get back with the selectmen, whose name is escaping me.
Bill Scully was there.
Yeah, Bill Scully, trustee from North Bennington, was there, and we're going to discuss the possibilities of this, if it'll work out.
I thought we agreed not to charge FEMA rates back and forth.
We did, but then, as I was looking at it, it's how do we come up with a comparable rate to make this really something we can trade equipment off? What scale do we put on loaning them the excavator without having a set rate from someone? Now, it's not to say there aren't other rates out there. I mean, we could look at Hertz rental rates and see what...
We could also take FEMA by, and take it by 60% or something like that, and do that on everything.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, there's lots of ways to look at this, and we're at the beginning stages, but I think anything that can save duplication of equipment and duplication of manpower is worth exploring, but we have to make sure that it's equitable for both towns here.
But that's not going to work for plowing, though, is it? Because we're going to need them on the same day when it snows.
Yeah, they only have two routes. Their third guy would do our sixth route. That's the only way this works. See, they plow with two routes. Their third guy, who they can have for three-quarters of the year, he would be our sixth plow route.
Oh, he would plow for us in the winter and work for them in the summer?
Well, depending on how many hours, but our hours, and this is why we were talking about renewing it every year based on what transpires. This year, we'd have him for a lot, the rest of the year. Last year, we might have used up all our hours during the winter. It comes to about 832 hours in the context of what we're talking, that he would be ours to use. A lot of that would be used up in the winter. At 34 average snow days, eight hours a day, it's 272 hours. That would come right off the 832, and the rest of that time could be spread out through the year to us, but there's a lot of variables in here, and we also have the fact, too, that, you know, to weigh off, we have a part-time seasonal employee now for plowing, and he's going to start next month for the summer, and his overall cost is quite low in comparison. But then you have to trade off, we have a dying truck out here that we're going to get through this winter. We would save money by saying we're using his truck, but if we don't come up with an acceptable rate, we would actually be paying more to use his truck than buying our own truck. You know, because in one scenario, that at using the FEMA rates, it would cost us about $30,000 more over 10 years than just buying our own truck. So, you know, there's just a lot of things to look at, and we're at, you know, the first few stages, but all this is worth exploring and taking some time to try and work through the numbers, because if we can save each town, you know, buying a piece of equipment that's going to sit in the yard, we're having an extra employee, it could work out, but it's the beginning stages.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's also the plan you've talked about, where this sixth road crew member would also be the water superintendent and the park supervisor and all those things.
Yeah.
So, we might not want to share him with North Bennington in the summer. We might want him mowing the parks.
Yeah, because it comes out, you know, to bring the guy, that sixth position is going to cost us about $40,000 a year, and that would be wrapping up a whole bunch of other things. You know, just using, paying for the person from North Bennington at 832 is going to cost us $18,000 a year. Now, you have to start shedding off time that he'd be plowing for us, that would be a cost to us anyway, but if our current person was plowing with our truck, using North Bennington would cost us about $5,000 more a year than what we can do now, and this is just roughing things out. So, you know, it's a good idea, it's worth exploring, but...
Exploring, yes.
When the numbers come in, it just might not be what we're looking for, which we might as well carry on with this. Mentioning the truck, the one ton out here, I want to keep for another year. I went through the records, we've only spent $14,000 maintaining this over 10 years, 11 years. It would be really worth it for us to spend a few thousand more keeping this running. The belt and the body needs to be replaced, or, yeah, Steve, some part, it sounded like a belt to me, but something in there needs to be replaced, but for a minor amount of money, we'll be able to buy a truck outright next year if we need it. But what we do need now is a shop pickup truck. The pickup truck we got out here, we bought from somebody for a couple thousand dollars, and we've spent thousands on it. It's now been pushed out to the corner, and we'll get rid of it, but I'd like the board to approve letting us purchase a shop pickup for under $10,000. We'll just find one from somebody that's, we have good mechanics, they can look over, and if it fits their needs, we could just buy it, you know, because it would be under $10,000.
Is that just for getting to site, job site?
It's just running around, you know, instead of taking a dumb truck, you know, you take the pickup with pole saw, you run down to track the supply with that, it's just easier to move small stuff around, and a lot of times, guys will be out, one person will be over here, one person will be over there. Currently, you know, the ram is good, people like that for certain jobs. The pickup has always been a utility truck for everything, and for under $10,000, you can run for years. This one ran a long time, you know, and it's just a handy thing to have around for someone to run back and forth with, and especially if next year, if it turns out we don't need the one ton, all we're going to have is two tandems, two single axles, the pickup and the dodge. So, it's a minor investment for a lot of return, and we did the same thing in Sunderland a few years back, and alls we had was single axles, so we went and bought one from that place in Husick. It's still running, so, and like I said, if you find a nice pickup truck that they think is worthwhile having, and has what they can do, and can put a plow on it, like we've used this to plow when a truck's gone down, so it's always, you know, a nice utility vehicle to have around, at not a lot of expense, and we can just buy that outright from the equipment fund. At not a lot of expense and we can just buy that outright from the equipment fund now.
All right. Do you want a motion?
Uh, I think I'd need one, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve purchase of a, uh, utility pickup truck, uh, not to exceed ten thousand dollars?
Some more.
Ken?
Second.
Seconded by Tony.
Question?
Yes.
So would you sell this for anything or would you get, is it just beyond?
This, uh, the one ton, this year we wanna keep it. Because we need to, to tweak the equipment fund, because part of the equipment fund is still designated as the greater fund. That has been taken out so that we can combine it into equipment fund. Because voters vote to put money in the greater fund, but it's pointless to save twenty-five years for greater when you have, you're borrowing all this money in between. So by making that change and putting money in, my decision point on the one ton next year, if we decide to buy one, we can literally just buy it if we need to replace that. This year, because there's money in the greater fund, instead of the general equipment fund, we can't really do that, because you can't really spend the greater fund. But it'll have to be approved by the voters next town meeting, which I don't think will be a problem with just moving it so we can buy equipment. So, but right now, like I said, this, there's nothing really wrong with this, that some work, and Steve tells me they have the time to do the work before winter sets in, and it'll plow another winter. Uh, if we're talking about a five-man crew and either contracting or working some deal with North Bennington, it's pointless to buy another truck now. We'll have a truck parked out here. The pickup truck, there's always a use for that. That might be better this time.
More discussion? All in favor of approving the purchase of a utility pickup truck for less than ten thousand dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Five zero zero. Any more highway discussion? Well, we stalled long enough for David Newell to get in. Come on up. We're ready to, uh.
Sure?
We're ready to talk insurance.
Hey, you pay attention now, Jason. This is gonna be a riveting discussion.
Ladies and gents, thanks for inviting us over. Pass those around, thanks. And, uh, these also. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss the coverage with the board again. First thing, I passed around our schedule. Uh, if you wanna leaf to the very last page, you can see a schedule of three-year premiums there, just like this. Gives you an idea of the, uh, cost for each of the lines of coverage. The renewal this year is doing pretty well, about one percent over last year, which is good for the, uh, when you all add all the lines up together. Um, the town's claims experience has been very strong, which helps a lot. Um, and we'll discuss all these different elements of the coverage here, but those are the different policies that you do have. And what the annual premium is for them. The, um, treasury bond is a three-year prepaid, uh, policy, which we did for you back in twenty fifteen, sixteen. That goes for three years, including this year. Gives you an idea of the range of the, uh.
Okay, so the, the increase is a little more than it looks like, just because we don't have to buy the bond again this year?
That is true. Right. Yeah. The bond is not part of this year's.
Um, are we, are we covered where we need to be covered at the right amount?
I think so, and we'll review that now. And, um, the second thing, I gave you the statement of values. You can take a look at that. Uh, that's a little bit hard to read, but what we have on there is all of the town properties. And on the far left, you'll see the building and then after, next to that, the contents. We add all these up and the two numbers you see at the very bottom are the, are added up and your blanket coverage is three million, one forty-one, nine fifteen. I reviewed this with David and we thought we had everything on here. So you can use the three million, one forty-one and some change limit for any one claim, whether it be contents or building at any location. Major buildings are on here. We also have the cemetery fences on here, uh, on seven A, up by the historical society and down here. War Memorial is on here and the Howard Park structures, as you can see.
And these building, um, numbers, I assume those are replacement costs and not appraised value?
Yes, it's something close to that. And the coverage is replacement cost coverage.
Yeah, 'cause I don't see two hundred thousand dollars worth of building at the recycling center. But it would probably cost us that much to replace it.
So that's how we come up with the numbers that you see on page one. We wanna go back to the schedule here again. Second page in from the title page and you'll see on there, uh, the three million, one forty-one, nine fifteen, which we just looked at, which is the blanket limit. In addition to that, we do have some extra expense coverage of a hundred and fifty thousand. So if the town was, had to move somewhere else or set up a temporary office or rent somewhere else, after an insurance claim, we would have that available, uh, to help.
Mm-hmm. I get this building burned down and we had to.
Exactly, yeah. We have, you have a thousand deductible on most things. There is a much higher one, however, on the flood coverage and the earthquake, as you can see there. We have fifty on the flood and twenty-five on the earthquake. Long as we've had the town's coverage, thankfully, we've had no flooding issues, including Hurricane Irene, which was certainly a blessing for all of us.
Yep.
The ordinance coverage means that if you had to upgrade after a claim because of revised building codes, we could do that, another five hundred thousand for you for that. It's part of the property extension.
Really? If the legislature passes a law that says, um, we have to put LEDs in all of our light fixtures?
That's right.
You'll help us basically?
We do see this somewhat frequently after claims.
Uh-huh, okay.
Uh, built local building codes. Of course, the town is partially responsible for its own building codes, but that sort of thing and state codes, right? In the middle, the equipment breakdown covers the HVAC systems, the heating, uh, systems, compressors, things that are mechanicals for sudden accidental breakdown. It includes inspection of the ones that have to be inspected by, uh, required by the state. That's included. The next section, we have that number there, four thirty-nine, nine forty-seven, and I'll refer you to page eight. Take a quick moment and look at that. That is, uh, what we call mobile equipment that the town has, which are some equipment, the greater attachments for the trucks, et cetera. A thousand deductible on this. Covers these things, of course, as they're off-site and in use. And, um, we can certainly can revise this, David, if.
Yeah, I, I think before we get to the final, I'll go through the list, because Steve.
Make sure everything's up to date.
Yeah, 'cause I thought, um, I thought we had more like a million and a half dollars worth of equipment.
Well, this doesn't have the trucks on it. The trucks are not on here. They're in another section.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Right.
So greater, okay, yeah, right.
So when he says truck plowing, that's just the plow itself?
Just the plow, plow itself, right.
Okay. Yeah, I should have realized that trucks cost more than two thousand dollars.
Yeah, let's get a couple.
Let's order two of them, right? Uh, back to the page, second page in again. Um, we, we have two hundred thousand for the firemen's, what we call mobile equipment there, which is what they have on the trucks, compressors, other tools, equipment, the uniforms and all that sort of thing is covered with that. There is one change this year, which just came in a couple of days ago. It's after you and I had our first discussion, David, on the fire trucks. Um, previous till now, which was kinda nice, even though we've had very good experience with our fire trucks, they did offer replacement value on the fire trucks, which means if you have a claim, there's no depreciation, which is fairly common on an auto, for an automobile truck. Um, they now have actual cash value coverage, so there could potentially be some depreciation if you have a claim on the fire trucks. Now, it is true that the trucks hold their value quite nicely and, of course, they're extremely well-maintained, which is a big help. So I don't think that would be a major issue if you had a claim. But I'll give to David, and we should be sure that the numbers for all three of them are pretty accurate for what, what their value is now. Uh, we wanna have those numbers on the policy for the trucks. The replacement cost was great while it lasted and I was delighted that we could offer that for many years, but it's no longer available through the program. In addition, we have the computer system and the media covered. This is part of the program, so two hundred and fifty thousand is probably more than the town needs, but you're covered for that, as is all the other towns in the program and the hundred thousand for the media. Uh, power surge is covered for them as well. So feel free to ask any questions as I'm following along on this. Uh, page three, we do have blanket employee dishonesty for all town employees, with the exception of the treasurer and assistant treasurer. We have a separate policy for that. That's what we looked, looked at in the last page for the three-year policy. Limits three hundred thousand for this. Uh, in addition, we have some coverage on cash inside and outside, outside meaning on the way to the bank. That would include the landfill premises as well. Um, and some coverage for the forgery, computer fraud, funds transfer and counterfeit currency. Had a very small claim a few years ago now. It's probably over five with the minor theft at the landfill on some of the cash that was there. There's a thousand deductible on that. Uh, the general liability is next. You have an umbrella that's excess over this. So your limit is a million per occurrence. For general liability, which is, covers all the town locations, activities for slip and fall and property damage. Um, we include also in here, the fire department E and O, so, uh, so-called professional liability for the firemen. There's a question in their judgment of the decisions that they make. We cover that. Uh, we do cover sexual abuse and molestation for the town. Pollution is excluded for the landfill premises, but it's covered elsewhere, pollution liability. And asbestos liability is excluded. Page four, we use.
Pollution liability for landfill is included?
That's excluded.
Landfill excluded, but you said it's included somewhere else?
Well, included for this building, for the other town premises.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's third-party liability.
Yeah, there's no coverage for the landfill.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I remembered, yeah. Before we turn the page, um, I've been thinking about computer fraud is, uh, fifty thousand dollars in coverage. That's if, uh, somebody hacks our.
That's right.
Bank account and takes all our money.
I could see if, that could be raised if you wanna look at that as an option.
Do you know what other towns do? It just seems like.
Probably varies quite a bit.
I wanna say I remember going to, uh, VLCT course about this and the example they gave was a school that, an SU that got hacked and their, their cost was seventy thousand dollars cash, not counting downtime.
Yeah.
I think that's something we can, uh, have Melanie address with our bank. Uh, I wonder.
In the meantime, I can get some closer areas for higher limits. I can pass them on to David. You can think about.
Yeah, we, we can see. That's a good point. Uh, yeah, we should look into that.
Yeah, 'cause I assume, uh, this coverage would protect us for the, the time it would take to recover from that as well, or is this just for the cash value of what's taken?
My quick answer is it's just for the cash itself. Even though, I'll try to get the coverage form and I'll read, I'll send that to you.
Okay, yeah.
Read that over.
Yeah.
I'd like to look at a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that could be more. It's. I mean, you're nobody if you haven't been hacked in this world.
It's just a matter of pushing buttons. I mean, they.
Yeah.
Right.
We like, you know, we've got a pros, a professional company doing our IT, but, you know, so does Sony, you know? It, uh, it can happen real easy.
Yeah, I'll quote the hundred on the computer fraud and funds transfer, just so you see those two. Probably not that much concern, I must say, about the counterfeit currency and forgery.
No.
We'll, uh, we'll get those over to David for you.
Okay.
Back to page four, we do cover, of course, the town for all the streets and roads. You have about eighty-six miles and the water company activities. Um, we also have the vacant house covered for you that the town now has taken possession of, uh, North Road.
Mm-hmm.
Four ninety-two. The liability only on that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we got that right if we bought it.
Oh, good, good, yeah.
Just in case someone gets hurt walking. Even trespassers have a tendency to.
Okay. And then once we level that, we won't have any special liability there, yeah.
Which one is four ninety-two?
The one we bought last year?
Last year, yes.
Right. This year is at five-ten, North Road, yeah.
Next section, we do cover the, your law enforcement activity, which are the constables.
Oh, wait, wait.
Okay.
That's a good point. Are we covering the, the new house?
Well, we'll add that. It, when it closes, I'll just call David. We'll add that until we do something with that.
You still don't own it yet?
No.
No, but we'll own it on Thursday, I think.
All right, that.
I'll call you Thursday.
Put that on, just put it on.
Um, law enforcement liability, we do cover the town's exposure to law enforcement activities, including the constables, um, including sex abuse, molestation on that. Twenty-five hundred deductible. The town has done very well on this. We've never had a claim on this.
That's, is that strictly the constable or the sheriff or?
To include, yeah, the town's exposure on that. If someone comes after you for a law enforcement situation, including the sheriff. The sheriffs have their own coverage, I'm sure, for this. Uh, your biggest exposure is probably the constables that are under your direct control.
But I, I assume, just like everything else, anybody could sue us if the sheriff did something that somebody didn't like while they were under our hire.
Because we contract the sheriff. It's not like the, the troopers who we don't contract, who we contract.
Uh, the next section is the vehicles and, um, it continues on page five, the list of those.
And I'll go through that again and we'll just make sure we have the complete list.
We protect the town for use of non-owned auto, so employees or volunteers, board members driving. If there's an accident and the town has sued for that, we protect the town for that activity. Um, of course, we can cover higher vehicles. Um, the, we help the firemen a little bit. Um, they're on the way to a fire, have an accident, they don't have collision, we can offer a little bit of coverage for that, you know, five thousand of coverage for the firemen, take care of it deductible, or if they have no collision on the way to an accident. Um, you can just take a look at the schedule, the, you'll see, for example, on bottom of page four, we have the tractor on here and the trailer. They're covering them just for liability coverage, not comprehensive in collision. The, if you flip the page, the fire trucks are separately covered, as we talked about, for comprehensive collision. The eight ninety-nine, big tech trailers, just liability on that. Otherwise, you do have a five hundred deductible, collision, two fifty in the comprehensive.
Dave, what's the two thousand three Ford, Ford, four fifty truck? Two thousand three F four fifty?
That is probably.
You got the, you got the five fifty.
The five fifty on here?
Two thousand six.
Yeah. This is probably not here anymore. That's why we're gonna go through this and eliminate things here.
Certainly, certainly don't need.
And the Chevy's gonna go off this list, too, and.
Yeah, okay, then.
I'm seeing on that, near the, about two-thirds of the way down on page five, that two thousand eight dump, you think we. You'd think we probably would have collision on that. That might be a misprint on our part. You probably still have a fair amount of value in that.
The AM general dump?
Yeah.
No, that virtually has no value.
Okay, fine.
But it'll probably run longer than anything else we have. That was a 500 dollar Army truck.
Well, that one, that's right. That's a pretty good deal.
That is a good deal. That one is running.
And David will look this over with your highway guys, be sure-
Yeah, we'll clean up any-
Is that the year of the Army truck, or is that the year we bought it?
It's probably the year of the truck, because I don't think it's that old.
Okay. Goodness.
And too often, you get a 2008 vehicle for 500 bucks?
That's right.
Yeah. Just call norm.
Workers' comp, you're now about even, premium mod is .99. It was worse, as you can see, in 1314, and what this means is you have a surcharge based on your experience, and in that year, it was 1.14, so you had a 14% up charge. And Art remembers these great old days from his workers' comp, Whitman's. But you see all the classes there, and we do try to break it down as specifically as possible, because it helps you with the premium. First class, for example, is summertime road maintenance, 5506. And a little bit further down, you'll see snow removal, 9402. We do break that down, because the rate's about half for the, for snow versus the active road work that the guys do in the summer. And otherwise, the landfill, et cetera, animal control, it's all in here. Park is mowing and cemetery work. Water company.
How does that work with the cemetery mowing? He's under contract. Do we have to have Whitman's comp on here?
We, I don't believe we would cover Jay. He's a private contractor. I think this would have anything to do with anyone, it would be Ken.
Okay, yes.
Your employee. Because Ken is technically an employee.
Next page on seven, we do have a five million umbrella, which gives you another five on top of the one million, which we just looked at, for general liability, auto, use of all the vehicles. Covers employer's liability, which is part of your workers' comp. And also gives you excess, which is significant, over the public officials' liability, which covers all you folks and all the other towns, commissions of the boards and commissions of the town, and the law enforcement liability. So you have a, hopefully, pretty good protection there, and your experience has been great, which is, we hope that continues, but that does give you some excess coverage over all of those policies. If I want to flip to page nine. Yeah, go ahead, Art, question?
Yeah. What's the overall umbrella? What's the maximum somebody could sue us for?
Well, you now have six million. You have one million on your general liability, plus another five. Total of six.
Then what do you think?
Sounds like a lot to me.
How does that compare to other towns our size?
Well, it's going to vary. Some are less and some are more. How's that for an answer? It should be true.
You sure you have a lawyer?
Yeah, I would say that for towns Shasbury size, that's probably maybe more than most towns would have. Some would probably have a one, two million umbrella. I think it's great to have five. Some larger institutions in town, like the colleges, would probably have more than that.
Okay. The more you have, the more they sell. Well, that's true, too. They're sitting deep pockets. Deep pockets. Okay.
Right. On nine, the public officials' coverage covers all of you folks and the other boards for wrongful acts, which is a pretty broad definition of decision-making and discrimination, among other things. And then underneath that, important is employment practices, which is covered as well. That covers the town for wrongful termination, sexual harassment in the workplace, fair to promote, et cetera. Those issues there. We do have some accident coverage, which is the, near the bottom there on nine. That's a good thing to have. It covers the town and eliminates issues that someone might get hurt at Howard Park, playing something, doing something, you know, which, and you have various leagues and folks that use that, whatever it is down there, but the town is certainly covered for liability, which means that the town is negligent somehow, but it's also true that many times when folks get hurt, you're not negligent, you're not at fault. So it's great to sort of take that argument off the table, at least at first, you know, which is what this does for you here. For a small amount of coverage, 25 on accidental medical and dental.
The idea there being that if somebody made a claim just for an accident-
Right.
-we'd be inclined to pay it to stay out of court-
Right. And you can do that. The rec. department sponsors stuff, which is great, and we can pick that up without trying to prove that the town is at fault, which oftentimes you're not. Which is good. The treasurer bond, as we mentioned, covers the assistant and the treasurer for the same limit as the other employees. So if you have some questions, feel free to ask. Hopefully, that was relatively clear. I'll get back to David on the 100,000 question Art had for the computer fraud and funds transfer.
And then you and Dave will get together on the-
Just schedule, make sure that we have the right schedule.
Yeah. I should give you this, and this gives you a little bit of a snapshot on claims, and I'll run up through this with you. Jason's still awake back there? I should check.
Look at that. Impressive.
Watch out for that rickety stool there next to you.
The young guys bring the A V stuff. Look at this, it's on the screen, PowerPoint.
Very impressive, Jason.
That's us old guys. We tick out, tech out every week here.
What I showed you here is, this is a loss run, and I yellowed in some of this. I'll try to walk through this. You'll see the first top left says general liability, and you can see on there, on the far left, when the claim was, who the claim it was. This was very, pretty minor. This is a property damage claim. David probably can give you more details some of the time, if you want to dive into that, and I don't remember actually the circumstances on that. Then down below, you see the two workers' comp claims there. Both are closed, which is good. One of them a bit more than the other one. And these go back to 2013, so you're looking at a three-year loss run on this, which is pretty good. The next page, and Dave remembers this one well, famous truck fire that happened when the truck was being retrofitted, I guess, for a dump body.
Yeah, it was being put together, it was brand new.
Yeah, garage burned down. David did a good job of monitoring that, but that was, ended up being paid by your Otherwise, auto experience, very good. You know, you can see very small glass claims, that kind of thing, which is excellent. And then on the final page, there was one claim there from June of last year. That's closed. A, I think a tree branch is what that one was.
Yeah, they, we parked the tractor under the wrong tree.
Fell on the, fell on the truck.
Yeah, or at the top of it.
So that is a pretty good, very good, actually, picture of what, of the town's experience. And I give you a lot of credit, and David as well, for your folks-
Yeah, handful of claim-
Being very safe, safety conscious, and doing a good job of managing, which is great.
Yes. Excellent. Yeah, very good.
Need a motion, David?
Well, we still, we just, we need to get final numbers and then-
Yeah.
And come back and-
Do we have time? Do we have plenty of time?
It was on July 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
July 1st, okay.
Okay, so by our next meeting, we'll have numbers and be ready to approve.
Yeah, I'll get that to you on that.
Yeah, and I'll just go through the equipment, and we'll make sure we all have the same list to work off of, and we'll be set.
Good. Yeah, and I guess we come back on July 2nd, and we're deciding between this amount or that amount for, say, the computer fraud. We can-
June 6th.
Yeah, we can go backwards on that.
Yeah, it's no problem. Yeah, because we'll have the whole package ready for a vote to approve the insurance, and the 100,000 from 50 to 100 can just be added in. It won't be, it won't be a major amount. Actually, we could probably have that ready.
I don't do, David, as I'll leave you these. Give this to the firemen.
Oh, okay.
Plug in the values of the vehicles.
Oh, okay, yep.
Just let me know. And then when you, the board's acts, you can, one of you good folks, you probably sign the statement of values.
Okay, yep. As soon as we go through this, yep.
This thing here, which says the extension and the, all the terrorism rejections. We're not terrorized here in Shasbury, are we?
Not yet.
No, that's great. They're not going to pay extra for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
This is the fire department.
I'll drop your projector off.
Mr. Moffett. That part is not insured. Stop hitting the projector, it's not insured.
Now, can you scoot me back a little bit to the laptop?
I did, boss.
You did, yeah. It's a real rickety stool.
Thank you.
You got it? You got a, it's like a rearview mirror, you got to overturn it. There we are, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right. Any more questions for Dave?
Nope.
Thanks, Dave. We'll see you in three weeks, I guess.
I'll get those numbers to David.
Yeah, I guess, do we need him back here in three weeks?
If I just bring the contract, I think that'll be good. Yeah. Yeah. We just agree on these things and-
Yeah, good. Save you a trip.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right, Jason, you've been waiting patiently. Come on up.
What's that, Jason? About 20 minutes, 23 minutes? It's intense. Yeah.
Jason, remind me your last name. Dolmitch from-
MSK is here to talk about doing a site plan on the second site at the landfill.
Dave, do you just want me to jump in?
Yeah, just leave right out. Jason and I went over the site on Friday, and he had some great observations, and I invited him to come down and share this with the board, and his impressions of it.
So, yeah, David and I met on site. We looked at the location that you guys were talking about, batted around a couple ideas. One of the first things that I sort of, I mean, I came up with was the, I really feel like the building, it's possible to put it where you want to put it, but the likelihood that you would be happy with it would, and its placement in relation to the road, would probably be pretty low. We also then sort of broadened our perspective a little bit, started looking around the upper plateau of the landfill area, started asking questions about what, how, what the longevity of those existing structures are, how, you know, married are you to the recycling, the recycling and transfer station as it is? You know, we can, you can put up a building anywhere. It seemed like the buildings that were there weren't sacred, and that they're probably not something that you want to design around, and that rather, it might make more sense to sort of look at the whole site holistically and ask the question, like, where's the best spot for, where's the best spot for the building? Where's the best spot for the transfer station and recycling center? Where's the best stop, spot for the water, water building? You know, it seemed like we might be considering, that the Shasbury might be considering putting the salt shed down on the bottom of the, bottom sort of plateau, because it felt like maybe there wasn't enough space with the existing buildings up there, but that, in reality, it's nice to have the salt by the trucks. It's definitely nice to have the salt by a place that you don't have the salt to get down to get the salt out. So I guess, after we batted around all these ideas, it seemed like it made the most sense to sort of open the dialogue, as opposed to about what you guys sort of want for the site, and what you want to accomplish, as opposed to sort of going full bore and providing, you know, a site plan that, I guess my gut tells me would be like a shoehorn project. Wouldn't necessarily result in anything that either you guys or I would be very satisfied with. So I guess that's-
Yeah, we talked, yeah.
That's not out of line at all with what we've been thinking. We've, Dave and I have talked that, you know, at least the storage building out there would come down, and there's a map on aerial view behind you, if that's of any help while we discuss this. We've also looked and noticed that, yeah, the transfer station building is in not great shape anymore.
And Trevor and I have discussed the benefits to both of us, if we could use containers, like they do at most others. Jason brought up that, well, you know, looking at this as a one big project, everything would be cheaper to take these buildings down-
Exactly.
-altogether. And we can go back to, we have the two access points off the road, so we could create a new entrance to a new transfer station. We were looking like where the transfer station is now in the water garage, has maybe set the building back there, I mean, a number of places. And the water department building, their actual storage space, might even fit into the space in the Rupert garage we're talking about, is that is now their food pantry. So, I mean, there are options here, and Jason brought up some very good points as we were looking at it, that there's other ways of doing this that would solve an issue for the town for years.
Does anybody know where the actual cap comes? I mean, we can see where it's been mowed and everything, but where, where does the, where is the actual cap that we can't puncture?
You see this little swell over here? It's right that you can't go past here.
Okay, so it's just about, we're already using everything that-
Max.
There's a ditch there, isn't there? Isn't there a ditch all along?
You know, there was another, another sort of idea that I thought was the fact that transfer station and the recycling center is like, that's the public space. And if we, you know, sticking a building in the front, that's the, sort of the municipal space, and then having people drive through that space, we're sort of, like, from a site management perspective, it's not ideal. And if we start to look at the buildings and start to ask what their function and use is, and, you know, whether we even want to keep them, you know, for the next 10 years or five years or whatever, it starts to beg the question, why, you know, why would we make an investment, a big investment here, just to save, you know, a couple buildings for a couple more years? And the more that David described it, it seemed like, particularly the recycling building, it sort of outlived its usefulness in general, in that taking it down as a part of a larger construction project would probably be pennies on the dollar. And that, you know, in the end, the replacement cost of that would be virtue, would be also very inexpensive. You wouldn't necessarily have to do this right away, but another thought would be to, once again, sort of physically separate those spaces with a fence, right? You guys have a lot, the more you utilize the site, the more likely are you ought to have a lot of equipment. There's already stored materials out there that are sort of easy, they're just there. It sounds like, from your insurance policy, that you do not have a lot of theft there right now, but that can always change as well, so.
So just, in general, you're thinking this garage building probably belongs back here somewhere?
Yeah, I, you know, I, without, without sort of doing the, going through the process, I would say, I would say in an ideal setting, we would be looking at, you know, municipal activities here, and then, you know, transfer station up here. And I still think, I think that you, you could utilize the existing entrance for both activities.
How much area is to the right of our main driveway coming in, that green area? That's pretty level, and that looks like not being utilized at all.
Yeah, that's all yours, too.
Yeah, it's ours.
Yeah, so, I mean, if, maybe move the driveway one way or the other, so that we can utilize that, because that, the driveway is really kind of separating that, and not, and so it's not part of a, of a bigger area. But, you know.
Jason pointed out, too, that the, all this surface is good for the trucks right now. I mean, this is, you know, there's no need to build a roadway. The roadway is there, and it's used all the time by trucks now.
You know, may actually, you know, I'm not certain, the one thing in my mind- One thing in my mind, too, is just when we're looking at redevelopment versus new, you know, not knowing the exact numbers, but, you know, the less we have to expand, the less likely we get into a permitting threshold issue. So, it's sort of, there's some potential overall things. I, I don't know whether it would get us out of it or not, but it's always worth a shot. So.
You're talking about stormwater?
So, operational stormwater permits have a one acre threshold.
Yes.
And then you've got a 5,000 square foot expansion, right? So, the question is, are we gonna, are we past that already for, for the whole facility as the way that storm, as the way that stormwater management will look at it? And if we are, you know, what if, are we going to do something that's going to increase that? There's also, we can start playing games, redevelopment area versus, there's, there's lots, you know, the sort of the use of redevelopment or the reduction of existing impervious is a part of a redevelopment project that disturbs over, that creates more than one acre or redevelops more than one acre. There's lots of flexibility that sort of gets us out of using structural practices that, you know, are sort of an added expense to the site cost.
Well, you got your, that lower area, Jason, to the right, I don't think it's even on there.
Down there.
Yeah, down there where it was cleared.
Yep.
If you got a stormwater issue, you can always make a big pond down there.
Sure, you can, but I, it's also nice not to have to do it at all.
Right.
So.
But I mean, it's not a deal breaker if you might.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. No, I don't think any, I don't think this site is a deal breaker. I think that, that the site, you know, for me, it would be nice to fit all the uses up top first. And that as, yes, and there's, there's plenty of area to use.
Right, well, what I'm thinking is, like, where the recycling center is right now, you could move that, your garage back there. And even the salt shed in that area, too. That green area to the right of the drive, you could make into a recycling center. We're just adding maybe a little.
I also think there's this, I mean, that area is, that area is fair game, too.
Right, oh, sure.
You could have transfer on both sides.
Right, exactly. But, I mean, you've already got your road there, so maybe you might have to add a little bit of a park in there, a little more.
Yeah, and it's going to depend on how many trucks you want to park there and.
Right, right. But I mean, my main thing, and I was talking to Dave about it, my biggest thing over 30 years of being a construction business is people putting in buildings and not raising them to an elevation where you're going to have a problem with water.
Absolutely.
You know, and that is probably the easiest thing to fix of anything. We're just raising a foundation, another six inches in elevation or a foot can solve, solve problems for the life of the building.
That's, that's what good, good grading and good design is all about.
Right, right.
Yep.
And we are talking about two sheds here, remember? Because we're talking about two sheds here also, not just one.
Yeah.
So, we need a salt shed and we need a shed for the winter sand, which has salt in it.
Right.
And so, it also has to now be, because we'd be building a new one, it has to have a.
Right, but I mean, between the lower area and the upper area, or even just the upper area, I think we've got plenty of room for everything we're talking about.
We have plenty of room.
So, you're telling us we should think about raising all these structures out here and designing a space that fits this whole thing without trying to work around these old buildings that are in here?
Yeah, put, I, yes, I put it just slightly different. I'm, I guess I'm suggesting, I'm recommending to the board to sort of look at this facility as one facility. And I'm not necessarily proposing, you know, you guys know the thresholds of voters and the budgetary constraints that you have to live with, but a good planning exercise will allow you to execute something over the long term.
Yeah, well, I don't, you know, we're, this, we were already saying, we were probably going to get rid of this one and the contents are of, of very low value. Dave is suggesting that the, the water department could probably move into the Rupert type building here, so there's not really a lot of additional cost there. Transfer station building, what we need is, it sounds like maybe just another. Painter space on the lean-to type roof.
That's what all the other towns are going to, according to Trevor. Wouldn't be any expense to us, maybe just, maybe just a roof.
Just pads and a, and a lean-to type roof.
Another clear span, maybe? Or is that?
Well, yeah, something to discuss with Trevor, what's going to make it easier for his trucks.
Or pull barn or something.
Yeah, a lot of it is his trucks going in and out and how he can get the containers.
Yeah, Trevor's a great resource. He knows how good transfer stations work and how bad ones work, so, you know, it's good to, it's good to know both.
But really, the expen, additional expense we're talking about with a holistic redesign is some sort of roof over the containers that, that is the transfer station now.
Yeah, true. I agree.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense.
And we are going to tear down this transfer station one point or another because it needs a lot of work right now that we don't want to spend money on it.
Looks like the rafters are about rotten.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, had its day.
I guess, I guess I make a motion that we just kind of turn it over to him to kind of start in with a general, a general thing and then just keep fine tuning up.
Yeah, I mean, if we have consensus, I'd say just, yeah, let him propose as a design for the entire site there.
Yes, but it makes sense to make two roads and in and out.
Perhaps, in, in that, so before I'm let loose, I think the most important thing is to think about is, is to think about who the more, most important stakeholders are and who I should, who I should coordinate with, just to sort, so that we can sort of get the needs figured out, probably the highway foreman.
The highway foreman.
Absolutely.
Trevor.
Trevor. That's the key.
And is the, and is there any need to talk about storage for water department? Are you thinking that's all going to be in building?
We would have to, to measure that out and see how that works out. And this is a topic we had coming up over Morton is, is a organization to deal with the various parties in this, MSK, Morton, because we have to have discussions that cannot be like the full select board, because every time we would go talk somewhere, it'd be a select board meeting. So, we have an organizational thing here to, to discuss and then, but yeah, for the project there, the keys are TAM, our foreman and, and the committee that's set up here, but the prime uses are that. The water would be a much smaller use. I mean, they're 10 hours a week.
You know, it's always important to.
Oh, yeah, we can't forget to get them.
Make sure that everybody's voice is heard.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to have room for their truck and their materials, I'm pretty sure would fit in that corner of the Rupert building. The truck might be another issue, but.
Is it Joe, is Joe, is Joe retired or my?
Well, we don't know. It seems to be up in the air. But Jim McGinnis is the.
Right, okay.
But don't worry, I think.
Superintendent, yeah.
Yeah.
With the current regulations they've got, what are you, what are you looking at for a septic system for a place like that?
I don't, I can pull up the old WW permit. I don't think it's going to change that much.
Well, yeah, but they won't, that doesn't apply there because you're several hundred feet from that location.
Well, it'll have to be a redesign, yeah.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
But I, I don't think the design flows are going to change.
You might can't be, I'd be surprised if they got more than 100 feet or maybe 200 feet advantage in that.
I, I would just look at the design flows and then we can, we would have to, I, I would not worry right now from a facility management perspective about where the perfect septic system is on this site, yet. We'd have to, we'd, we'd likely not want to use the one down below because it would be no point to running that much line.
No.
So, after we sort of figure out how we want to lay out the system, then we'd start going.
Right, I mean, I'd be shocked if that, if that never passed for.
It's all sandy material.
Yeah.
Sands and sandy loams. There's some, there's some pockets of, you know, denser material up there, but we'll find something that works.
Right, but you're talking, you know, I mean, there's not a bedroom there, there's nothing, I don't even.
I just, I can't remember that far back as to how much, how many, how many employees we have.
I dug, I dug some holes up there.
I, you're, I, you're taxing my personal memory on projects.
They showed you the present well?
Yeah, and I, I mentioned to David, that's something that we'll, we should look at, just decide whether it's something we want to use or abandon. Unfortunately, the fact is the only wells that are exempt from review from wastewater management division are single families. I don't know how old, even if this design flow is less than a standard single family home, I don't know how old that well is and I don't know what data's on there. I'll, the first thing to do would be to do a quick review of that, of the well drillers' report, if there is one, and then we can figure out if it is going to cost us less to reutilize the well or to just drill a new one.
Okay.
But that's just dollars and cents.
Just a, a cost parameter here. The board's voting to go ahead with MSK, just what are we setting as limits? polite way to put it.
Probably let them move.
Yeah, I guess that's a question for you.
Sure, I, I, I can put, what I would think that the most appropriate thing for us to do right now is to put a limited feasibility out and basically talk about all the things we just talked about. It would be getting, getting together with a small group of people, of stakeholders, going through, basically figuring out all the needs so that we can put a site plan together, doing a quick permit review. We all know what that's going to be, but once we have that sort of schematic site plan, that'll, that'll allow me to figure out what, whether we actually need an operational stormwater permit or not, because that's going to have a, a site, site, that's going to have a site construction cost related item to you. And then maybe we just, and then come back to the board with a, with a short presentation and a, a broad brush picture of an overall cost and then possibly talking about a phasing plan. So, I would think that that would, those would be the things that we could do. I don't have a number in my head right now, but I could certainly give that to David.
Okay.
Okay. I would think, I, I have to go back into our file and figure out how much information we have up top. We might need to do a little bit more limited existing conditions collection.
Well, everything you guys did before was done on the lower level, wasn't it?
Yeah, but for some reason, I feel like I've got some stuff up here, but I can't remember.
Somehow I feel like that, too.
I just, well, because we had to evaluate the access drive and survey data is so cheap when you get people onsite, it's better to grab more than less, so.
So, you're going to come back to us with an estimate on what's going on?
I would, yes.
An estimate on a site plan that includes the whole area?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the multiple functions.
And then I think, I think we may even, if, if David has a good handle on it, we can also talk about a phasing plan depending on what you, you know, how you want to fit into your overall budget or, or whether there's a magic bond, bond limit number that you guys are aiming for.
What do you mean by phasing plan?
Well, I mean, I, you know, like, we can, I, I mean, this, this project, if we, you know, maybe, maybe in this one, we're talking about demo building and then after that, we're talking about salt shed, transfer station. Or we look at demo building, salt shed, transfer station altogether.
So, probably be tran, demo, transfer station, keep that operational and then the building and then the salt shed or something.
Right, so that's another option, too. But I mean, if it all fits under, you know, if we, if the magic number's high enough, then it all happens at once because you're going to get a better economy of scale.
I think the only option is all at once.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, like Art mentioned a minute ago, the, the cost for moving the transfer station is almost entirely in the demolition. Because, unless we have to put in a roadway to loop it around, but.
Yeah, and I would think demo, demo all happens when you go to build a building. I mean, you give all the equipment, all the, all the, the capacity is in the building construction is all going to be there and so your mobilization cost for something small like a demo is going to disappear.
Yeah, the, the transfer station might be a little disjointed for a little bit as we transition, but I don't think it would be, it'd be mostly coordinating with Trevor because as you said, you know, Trevor can, can give us insight into how to make it work for him.
It could very easily, I mean, if, if, if we look at the idea of keeping all the public activities up front, you could create that work right ahead of time.
Before.
And then, and then close off the site for construction and demo everything behind it, so.
Because we will probably demo those houses almost ourselves, put them, put them in a dumpster after the fire department trails on them.
And you don't necessarily, I mean, you could end up with wooden platform, you know, wooden steps up to pla, you know, up to roll offs for a couple months or six months or whatever.
Did you find out about just burning that other?
Oh, no, I haven't gotten into that yet.
Okay.
A controlled burn?
Yeah, they, well, they used to.
Well, they're.
For training for fire.
Tire paper's got to come off.
Well, yeah, the last one I seen, they just took the shingles off.
For, for both of them, I'm just going to have to get Trevor and, because we had already talked about removing them and it depends what we find, materials that can't, there's so many rules now. You really have to find somebody who goes, well, this is this and this is that, you can't do this. It might be just, I'm hoping it's just not too expensive to remove those, so hopefully the tracks operator can just knock them down, put them in the dumpster and drive off and that'll be the end of it. We could, if this was ready, we could add this to the May 31st, just approval of this just to keep the whole process going. You know, if you would have it done by May 31st, because we have, doing warrants, we could add that to it because it will be a warrant meeting.
We, I can come with it in hand, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can submit it in advance, but I'd be happy to come and we can talk about it.
Okay.
And Morton, the, you have some building already sort of related information?
Yes, it's, well, not that much yet, but it's basically a 60 by 120, well, no, it's a box.
It's a box.
It's a box, it's a box building.
It's a box and they could tell me where the.
Yeah, yeah.
Where the doors are. All the important things.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to explain, but I can get you some information on that.
We've got pictures of the Rupert building we can give you if, if that's helpful.
Schematics is what I mean.
Yeah, because they actually had some questions on, on the site, too, and I said, well, we haven't quite planted it yet, but, I mean, they're, they're basically designing the building and it can be dropped wherever.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the sort of further away we get from the edges, the more, the easier the building is to design around. And that, that was our, that was my first sort of fear when we were, you know, this close to the road and we had a five, you know, a six foot grade change along the road that with, with an effort to have one, you know, sort of open curb cut, we would end up with some design challenges, water problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what Steve was, because he was asking about the site plan when it's done and I need to know parking and everything because I think he was thinking the same thing, that we're putting it in a tight spot here, so where are we going to have the parking in relation to the building and everything?
I mean, I would think, I would think our goal for this, for this phase would really just to, I mean, I, I could take it out as far as you want, but I would think that the goal for this would be to, really to come up with the concept, to stay away from the details, to identify, you know, all the steps that we would have to take depending on the site plan itself and then, then we would set the budget for the next round, given, you know, given the overall scope of the project.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
For your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We have an item on here, Morton contract.
The Morton contract is basically, I've signed it, you approved the check today, so Steve is expecting to get that, Steve from Morton, and then they'll get together. What came up, though, was, they're like, ready to go, so they, it's okay, why doesn't everybody come up and meet us at the Rupert building and we'll start going through with our architects? And I said, well, wait a minute, we don't even have a working group and the board just can't go show up somewhere because we have a meeting every time we're together. So, we need to have some kind of working committee that can report to the board because the whole board can't go everywhere or it would be a meeting every time we go anywhere. Uh, so we need, I would say, four to five people to keep it as limited as possible, to be honest. And we need two people from, I think, the road crew to be part of it too. The Steve, the foreman, obviously, and...
Ron Jennings was real active in the original.
Right, Ron was very active in the original highway committee.
Um, I missed a step here, what do we need a committee to, to do?
Well, because people want, want to talk about things, like, he wants people to go up to Rupert, go through things, uh, and report back to the board, and it needs to be obviously a couple guys in the road department so that they can actually talk about the building, uh, and look over plans and make suggestions, hear things, and then report back to the board. He was inviting everybody to come up, and I said, well, we can't invite the whole select board, because we can't go have a select board meeting in Rupert, because every time...
He wants to know exactly what, is there anything you wanna change, you know?
Gotcha.
Well, and we could talk to them and see if they...
Ken was talking about moving that door in the back on the side, yeah, that kinda stuff. So rather than, rather than him giving us plans and saying, well, the door's gotta be moved and all that sort of stuff, when, when he sends the plans down...
Yeah, and then we can report back, and even as simple as what, what Jason was just saying, that, okay, we need the stakeholders up here, but we still need a, a small committee to actually deal with this, to meet him up there and talk about it. And, um, it's unlikely that could ever be the select board, because again, we'd be having a public meeting every time we did it, where we just need the convenience of, people can go talk about this and report back to the board on different, different aspects. Uh, Steve and Ron from the road department, I would think is right, I'm gonna wind up in the middle of a lot of this, so I think I need to be on it, and then, uh...
Should I be, because I'm the liaison?
We're usually the liaison too, so I think you should be too, so, uh, and then it's up to the board, but it, smaller's better.
Yeah.
You may wanna meet, you may wanna meet up there in Rupert too, just to, you know, they've been in there for about a year now, right?
Yeah.
So they might have done something a little different had they, you know, thought of it earlier, so...
We wouldn't go up there without asking...
No, I'm just saying, yeah, well, yeah, but I'm saying that Rupert, they might've said, oh, we've got this great, we love it, but boy, if we had to do it again, we might've done this.
We did that with the crew, the six of us went up, and we went through and they explained everything and what they liked, and, uh, there's some very positive aspects of that building, but there are things, just from starting with, we don't need a food pantry. So, you know, that can be converted. I questioned the, the deck they built, but the guys in Rupert liked it, so, you know, there's just things, uh, to discuss with Steve up there, to discuss with Jason on the site, that a small group can discuss and bring back the information to the board. No, clearly no major decisions would be made by the group, but it's just a way for this to function and transit information without it being too many people to...
You say the food pantry, what, do they got a kitchen there?
Well, no, they have, they have, uh, I'm calling it a food pantry, it's like the food shelf, like the Arlington food shelf.
Okay, so, that's actually a food pantry.
No, they have a big pantry back there.
It's where the public comes and picks up...
Yes, they takes up food, yeah. It's quite, quite a big area of the back, so, I think, I think it would work out, yeah.
So maybe, um, Jim McGinnis is on that, if we're talking about...
Waterboard.
Moving his...
I would think, uh, I mean, we can talk to him about site, but I, I think his aspect in the garage is very small.
Right.
And would, you know, the, the big stakeholders here are the garage and TAM really, uh, the transfer station, and of course, uh, at many points Trevor would have to be asked over into this too, who would obviously need his insight into how to place everything.
So are you picturing like a pole barn with a couple rollouts underneath there with steps up to dump your stuff, I mean, and so he can get in and out of the rollout?
I'm, I'm open to any suggestion, you know, I know different towns have different ways of doing it, and, uh, we're not gonna have like, like in, in Sunderland or Casella, you're actually, the container's down here, you're above them, and you're just throwing stuff in the top, we're not gonna be able to do that here, so maybe we do have to have the step up thing, uh, there's lots of ways of looking into it, we'll just have to see.
Bennington is just, there are containers and walkways that you can just dump in.
Yeah.
We're talking about the details of the Morton plans here, the TAM part is not part of this.
Well, but this, this group will be, what I'm envisioning, if we, instead of having a group to deal just with the Morton building and a group to deal with the site, it's the group that will deal with everything and report to the board, just to keep it unified. Because things, as they transition from one side to another, problems will overlap. If he's talking about moving the building like this, the committee looking at the transfer station is gonna have to know how that affects, so I think it's just a small group to keep the project in focus and report back here, and bringing major things back to the board, uh, because obviously we can't approve anything, so it's really just steamrolling.
So you probably should keep it to just two selectmen?
Yeah, three makes a meeting.
Right, so it doesn't have to be a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's any time, there's three that's a meeting.
Art and...
Art and I, is that acceptable?
Art and me.
Okay. Ken, did you wanna, would you...
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. Art and Ken then?
Okay, good. Yeah, all right, then, uh, because that was one of the first things Steve asked, I had to slow him down, because we'd have to have a reasonable group of people to, you know, talk, I think he forgot that, I just can't drive the board around and look at stuff, it doesn't, doesn't work that way. But, you know, what, what would happen was, like, we'll go up to Rupert now, we can schedule this, uh, we'll discuss their needs, the town's needs, and bring back the things here for the board to review, uh, as I said, clearly nothing's gonna be decided, because it's, uh, we'll have to come back, especially money, things, or the final placement, all that stuff. I mean, uh, I think it's just a, a easier way of working with a small committee, that we can just go places and deal with this, like I said, even to go see Jason over here and talk basic things.
Have we got any plan, Dave, for size on a sand shed, or are we not gonna have a sand shed?
Oh, we, I think we have to have a sand shed, I think because of the, because of where we are, and we mix salt with it, we can't have the runoff, so we're gonna have to have the pile, my pile out here is gonna have to be up there, preferably under a clear span, uh, to preserve the salt in it, and that's gonna have to be on an upper surface and, uh...
What, what size have we discussed, or haven't we?
I think we looked at, and I left that downstairs tonight, but I think you got the one from Iron Works or whatever it was, and I got the clear span one, we had one that was like fifty by thirty-five or something, we had a couple of sizes, but they came in and, two of them came in from clear span at a hundred and twenty-five put up.
Because if you're looking at the plan you got up there, if you have the building where it's set now, salt shed over there on the left, you could put that sand shed to the right of the driveway coming in, in that green area.
Yeah.
You can have it all right there.
You could put that fifty by fifty salt shed right on top of the water department there.
Yeah.
And put the other one, the sand shed, the winter sand shed will actually be bigger.
But, I mean, you can, you can play it around any way you want, but you got plenty of room there.
Yep, and as long as...
That we have a brook right over here.
Yeah, I pointed that out, and, and Jason, there's, he had some idea, so I think we can manage it somehow.
Well, I, I would, all I would take it out, you have a pad there, and then you put a berm on the right-hand side of that sand, salt shed, and control your water flow wherever you gotta go with it, and if it can't get out of the, the sand shed...
And of course, it's, yeah, and of course, if it, if it turns out, we, he can position it somewhere else, but it'll, it'll get in, you know? Uh, we might, even if we have to trim it back a little bit, uh, we can do it separately and then mix in the building when we get low.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think they should be separated, though, I think they should be fairly close, so when you're mixing, you're running out.
Yeah, yeah, it depends, if we have to do mammoth piles like this every year, we'll have to, uh, leave unsalted stone out, and then when the pile gets low in, in the winter sand thing, we'll have to mix inside the winter sand thing to bring it back out.
Well, I mean, you could always make your sand smaller and then mix it in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
If you had to.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole bunch of different ways.
That one near inside. And you use half the salt.
Yep.
So, um, this, uh, building committee, for lack of a better term, Art, Ken, Ron, Steve, Dave, Trevor, is that the...
Uh, Trevor, no, uh, Trevor will be called when, when we need to talk to salt shed, he'll be, we need him, because it's, uh, he partially runs the operation, so...
So, Art, Ken, Ron, Steve, Dave, is that...
Yes.
Is that the makeup? We should have a motion to, uh, form a building committee to...
Study the site.
To study the, the site plan and, uh, building plans, I'm trying to come up with wording.
Preliminary site and building plans.
Well, you could just call it the building committee and just, we work in the direction of the board, so we do whatever the board said.
Yeah, uh, okay, so let's, uh...
Motion to form a building committee for the purpose of evaluating the site and...
And structure.
Site and structure for a new garage. Uh, we have a motion to, uh, to form a building committee to evaluate site and structure for the new garage, made by, moved by Mitch.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Should we abstain, because we're part of it?
No.
No.
Aye.
Um, the new building committee is established by a vote of five zero zero.
Okay. It almost seems real.
We've got a long way to go.
Can, can we talk about if, if a contractor wants to come in and see the specs that we are buying for ten thousand dollars, do they have to buy, do they have to pay for them? That's what you're, that's what was registered in the minutes.
Yeah, when, when, uh...
They wouldn't pay ten thousand dollars.
No.
No, that, that's a...
And are we even allowed to sell them?
Uh, the, the thing with Morton was that the, what they produce for us, which will not be the final building, construction grade plans, because they have to add in that section, that was the second section where they do the, uh... You know, it's less step two, which is another ten percent on, was the architectural, mechanical and structural plans, uh, they'll be the final part after the original set that we're getting. The original set lines things out. Now, what would be bid on is what we're getting now, so I don't even know what the cost would be to reproduce those, that's the cost, that's the only cost I'm talking about, if a builder wants a set of plans, someone has to pick up that cost.
Yes, okay.
And, and these plans probably won't be near as expensive as some, because it wouldn't have the minute detail. But if they cost a hundred dollars apiece, someone's gotta pick that up.
Just printing costs.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, we're not charging them, but someone has to pick up printing it.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, that's acceptable. Okay. Any more garage stuff?
I like, I like the idea of the whole area, the redesigning of that whole area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it just so makes sense.
Just use it as a blank piece of paper.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, as soon as we started walking, and you started talking about, it started making a lot of sense, so it was like, oh...
And it falls in beautifully with all of the, everything that we're updating.
And we could do everything and it'd be done.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yep, and we'd have that old rickety, uh, transfer station standing next to our big, beautiful garage.
Yeah, our big shiny garage, and the backside is falling off the, uh, transfer station, it would clean everything up.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, you wanna tell us about East Road paving bid?
Uh, we received a letter from the state that our, our paving for East Road has been approved, this will start from where we wound up down to Furnace Brook, and then maybe we'll finish it next year, uh, it's a very long distance, thirty-eight hundred feet. There's one last thing to get from the state, so the bid, I'll put a line in here pending final approval from the state, but that's, if the state gets the money, we're getting the money, so, um, we'll do that. Uh, Steve had pointed out one line in the bid that I sent to you guys, uh, under general specifications, all work zone devices and setup shall conform to the standards set forth in the most current edition of the MUTCD. We'll be hiring Green Mountain Flagging again to do the traffic control, it's cheaper than having our guys out there and losing a day's work from them. He thought maybe we should take that out, because this is for the paver, but I'm gonna talk to him again about that, because the paver has responsibilities to work within the confines of the MUTCD also, so we'll look into that. Otherwise, the specs are pretty much exactly the same as the specs we put out last year for, for East Road and for the year before in White Creek, and they don't really change much. So I'll start putting those out the bid if the board approves or, uh...
This is the, uh, just the description, the RFP description that you're...
Yeah, this is just the RFP, and then, uh, the bids will be done, I think, uh, I'll have a vote for June sixth, I mean, the week, the, you know, Peckham, Bowden, they'll all know, and we'll, we'll, they'll be able to have the bids in by June sixth, and we'll just pick then and get on somebody's schedule, you know? But we do have other roadwork going on, so there might be some savings in combining projects, there's, there's reclamation in two parts and, uh, well, it depends on what's going on, it's a busy time.
But you're gonna post it legally on the...
Oh, yeah, no, it has to be bid, it has to be in the paper, it has to be posted on the website and all that, that'll all start Friday. I don't know, we, we don't really need a motion for that, if, uh, you have questions on it.
Go ahead. And then, uh, we're gonna move on to financing documents for North Road?
Okay, I sent these out to the board earlier in the week, they're the standard documents from, uh, People's United, it's a capital improvement note for thirty thousand dollars to purchase, uh, five-ten North Road. I believe everyone's had a chance to read these, there's actually the note itself, a certificate of registration, that'll be signed by Melanie, uh, the capital improvement borrowing resolution, which the board needs to sign, and the treasurer will sign tomorrow, uh, and the capital improvement borrowing again, the same thing, the whole board will sign, Melanie will sign tomorrow, and there'll be attested to by Judy.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the, um...
Motion to approve the capital plan improvement note from People's United Bank in the amount of thirty thousand dollars at a rate of, I thought it was two, two percent.
We have a motion to approve the capital improvement note from People's Bank for thirty thousand dollars to purchase five-ten North Road at an interest rate of two percent.
So moved.
Moved by Mitch, seconded by Tony, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the capital improvement note is approved five zero zero.
So when's it gonna happen?
It's good.
When's it gonna happen, Tim?
It's a dumpster front.
The, the closing is scheduled for Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, um, I haven't heard any different lately, so confidence is high. Confidence is high.
Merrill actually sent me an email that she believes it's so long too.
I was gonna say send her the email.
For Thursday.
Oh, okay, because I'd asked her today about that and hadn't heard back, but things seem to be moving, treasure...
They had the one of the first computers, took up a whole floor.
Oh, dang. There was a, a note, there was a note from Merrill that there was a, a little bit of funniness in the title search, that sounded like, um, the, the worst case scenario would be that we have to do a survey on five-ten North Road, um, and not that it has any big effect, just because we own all around it, but in terms of, uh, just dotting the i's and crossing the t's and, in the unlikely event we were in some future date to try and sell it, it might, uh, it might matter, but something like this, kind of a, uh, fuzzy part of the property description.
Not surprised.
But, uh, it doesn't, uh, doesn't have any big effect, and it, it sounded like, uh, the survey could be done at our leisure, doesn't have to happen before Thursday.
Which, uh, takes us to the town administrative report.
Sean really have nothing left to say?
No.
Okay. Other business, um, I was asking Dave if we'd gotten any fuel bids, and he was saying that he hadn't actually put out those, uh, those advertisements yet.
was saying that he hadn't actually put out those, uh, those advertisements yet.
Yeah.
But I had been thinking about that, uh, more this week, and I think we ought to contact vendor, vendors about that. Um, I think that if we go and advertise another three weeks and come back and we still just have the one bid, uh, we don't know if that's a good bid or not. And I know there's concern that we asked, you know, three guys, and then later the fourth guy comes back and is upset that we didn't ask him, but I think our obligation to the town to get a good bid on fuel outweighs our obligation to try to keep from hurting the feelings of a, of a vendor who had every opportunity to bid on this and didn't read the paper.
I'm not worried about hurting their feelings, I'm worried about them suing the town.
Um...
But whether they've got any legal right to, I don't know, but I just, that, that's my concern, I'm...
Well, if it's been public, if it's been in the paper, if we've advertised...
Yeah.
They really don't have any recourse if they haven't bid.
And I, I didn't start the bid because I wanted to time it for the June sixth meeting, because, uh, we don't have another meeting till June sixth, so it would be the next three Fridays, Saturdays.
Well, remind me of the procedure. I mean, if we're, if it's under ten thousand dollars, we call three people and get three prices and then bid.
Yeah.
If it's over ten thousand, we're, are we actually prohibited from calling three people?
No, you're not prohibited from doing anything. The, the purchasing policy is, is just that a policy, but times, sometimes the policy doesn't work. If, if we got to the point where, June, June, uh, June sixth, and we had one bid, I, I kind of agree. It's very difficult to decide whether we have a good bid when we only have one person. Uh, then we could go outside and, and solicit people. We can solicit now. Uh, we had decided deliberately before putting this out the first time that we wouldn't solicit anyone. Uh, it's unusual. Last year I didn't solicit for this, and I got four bids.
Okay.
This year I didn't get any.
If you aren't worried about being sued by somebody for, because we didn't, I have no problem, but I just say it is, I'm, I'm just saying it is a possibility.
Um, well, yeah, of course you can be sued for any time, for any reason, but, uh...
I wasn't worried about hurting anybody's feelings.
Yeah.
I, I think we need, we need to make sure we get more than one bid, and, uh, um, I guess, I'm, wish I had the policy memorized, but if we, we have to advertise for three weeks?
No.
Or we can advertise for whatever we want.
You can advertise once, but I, I usually advertise for something like this. Uh, I was using the three weeks this time, because we have three weeks. We actually had four weeks, but I didn't wanna waste a week when we're not doing it until June sixth. And I put them in on Friday, because you get Friday and Saturday for the price of one, and, uh, every other bid I put in, I get people putting in. Now, Mitch had mentioned maybe it was too early, well, uh, I don't, they should be looking at the paper, but, uh, maybe we would get three if we advertised. If we didn't get three, uh, June sixth, or two or three on June sixth, we could then look into just calling a whole bunch of people.
See, we have no idea why they're not bidding.
No.
Because I haven't talked to anybody.
No.
Yeah.
And it gets...
These are standard market annual bids.
I know, I know. That's the, but, there's, so there's gotta be a reason why they're not bidding.
It's tough to bid on these things, because it's a roll on the dice.
Yeah.
If you do a fixed price, they could win, they could lose.
It's going up.
This year we're in, in a mix, but it's going up.
Yeah.
But they can hedge. I mean, there's...
Yeah.
They can hedge on this, so...
This is what they, they're in the business for.
They pre-buy, they pre-buy at today's date, and that's what they're bidding on, and it gets delivered at that rate.
But, yeah, I think we need to, to make sure we get more than one bid and not just take a chance on...
So you wanna call right off, plus advertise for three weeks?
Yeah, we can do both.
Okay, let's do both rather than hold, uh...
Maybe you could find out what the story is.
Then, then, you know, we advertise, it's out there.
So you're gonna advertise three more times and plus call some people in the meantime?
Yeah, I'll call our current...
Our current?
Yeah. I think I have to expand it beyond that, though.
Yes.
Call the people that, uh, bid last year.
Yes.
That's pretty much our current people and the one person who bid.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Okay, we just need something to go on.
Yeah. Alright, alright. I'll call, I wanna broaden this out. Like, everybody for the last two years, how's that sound?
That's fine.
If you bid in the last two years...
That's everything.
Yeah, that's, that should do it.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd like to ask the select board if they would like, if they would like to be included on the resolutions for the Shasbury Historical Society's Ordinary Heroes Resolution. And basically, in the past, we'd gone to the state, but the, and they, state had produced a resolution for us, but this year we were late getting our nominees done, and it was too far into session. So, uh, I would like the resolution to come from the Town of Shasbury and the Historical Society, and, uh, I'll just state it, I don't, you don't have to sign anything, I'll just state it, that's where it's coming from. Uh, if, uh, everyone's agreeable with that, I...
Without objection.
Okay, good. I just wanted, I didn't wanna put out there and say, put it out there, Town of Shasbury, without asking.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, thank you, that was all I had.
Okay, is there any other business?
Would you like an update on the daily office building?
Should we do that in executive? That's why I put it in there, too.
Yeah, if it's, uh, involves, um, price negotiation, we should do it in, uh, executive session.
Okay, good.
And the, the only other thing, that, the business of this, of that, uh, private cemetery up in Shasbury Hollow?
Yes.
Is it true that we don't have a legal right of way to it?
That's correct, but there's also other issues on the table here.
Okay.
Uh, I sent, Tim, Cinda and I were going back and forth on this. Um...
There's an editorial in the paper. Yeah, it says there was an editorial in the paper about that.
Oh, really? I didn't read that one.
It was?
Really?
About that not being able to get that, says my cemetery or something like that.
Oh, 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 it's from one of the people out west who was asking about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, this is, this is the, the quick explanation of this. Uh, I checked with Judy, and, and the deeds to these cemeteries, uh, can't be found. It's not deeded to the town, she can't find if it's deeded to anyone. Uh, to go through the legal process of these cemeteries, three elect, three...
Voters.
Voters of the town must petition the cemetery commission to take care of an abandoned cemetery. Once the cemetery committee agrees to it, it has to be posted publicly notice for three months. If no one steps forward, then the cemetery commission can decide that they'll take care of the cemetery. And then, anyone who wants to go visit the cemetery under state law has, has right to go to the cemetery commission and ask for a right of transit across the private property at a specific time and day to make a visit to the cemetery. So there, it's all provisioned in law, but there's steps to this. We just can't go clean this, because someone wants to clean, because we don't have a deed to it.
Yep.
And who, you know, if the cemetery commission wants to get into a deed search for the, then there's, what, thirteen, did I say, of these? That are little plots out here and there.
Thirteen.
It would be, one, the one that does have it in a deed i- is, is right up there. There's only one, and it's not on our list of cemeteries, but it's actually in someone's deed, and there's a little cemetery plot there.
Alright, so I just...
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, and they're, I mean, once, yeah, they would have to give a permanent right of way if we were the cemetery committee, no?
No.
Temporary.
It's temporary for a specific time and, time and day, and you have to have reason to wanna go to the cemetery.
And the person that owns that cemetery or has that property is not interested in anything?
Uh, they cannot refuse, by the law. There's legal action being taken against them for refusing to allow someone to transit their land to the cemetery. And it, like I said, the law also infers pretty clearly that it just can't be anybody. I wanna walk to somewhere, you have to go, well, uh, one of my ancestors is buried here, and I wanna visit the grave, and this is his name or her name, and, uh, they'd say Tuesday at four o'clock, you can transit the property, spend an hour, and then leave.
So you couldn't, you couldn't just say, like, the, you know, sh, every other Saturday or, you know, first of the month?
The way I read it, and of course they can get lawyers and argue about it, but the way I read it, you have to petition the, the cemetery commission for a right of access across the private land. They can, they can do that, but for a specified time.
I didn't know if that could be a generic time, repeated, you know?
If I was the landowner, I think I would have trouble with that. It's like, you know, and come, visit, and if you wanna come again, visit, but I...
Call me again.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just a little background for, um, the folks at home. We got a, an email from, uh, a person from out of state who came to Shasbury Hollow Cemetery to visit an ancestor's grave and found it in disrepair, um, as we know it is in. We talked about that last year. Um, but, uh, as Dave has pointed out, there are procedures we have to go through before we can, uh, take over maintenance, and it begins with, uh, voters, three voters in Shasbury saying that they want that cemetery maintained, so, um, if that's gonna happen, that's where it has to start. Okay, uh, reviewing action items, uh, last week we talked, uh, the action items were, uh, we're gonna need, uh, from David, a, a long-term budget for park improvements. We're still working on that.
Uh, that's kind of on hold, uh, because I asked David Newell to, uh, I'm having a, a risk management person come in from the insurance company and assess the parks. It hasn't been done in...
Good idea.
About nineteen years. So, he'll come in. We did remove, uh, a couple monkey bars and a little kid rocker thing that had a concrete exposed base. Uh, we're gonna put the rocker back. The monkey bars were welded together by us, which is always a no-no, and they were, they were rusty on top and everything, so they've been removed. Uh, I know that upset a few people, and I apologize for that, but, uh, I took the opportunity of rain and an available road crew to remove them that day.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the park has been regrassed and haid, and we covered up some of the other obstructions, but we're on hold to, uh, the risk management person gets here, will evaluate all the parks and what needs to be done, and then we'll move from there.
Okay.
Good idea.
Good idea, yeah. So the, the item two, the removal of playground equipment has happened.
A little dangerous.
Um, David contacted Steve Barton about, uh, the Morton specs, that's been done. He's also, uh, talked to MSK about the, the site plan, and we discussed that earlier. Um, for, uh, action items this week, the select board needs to look at the, the water board regulations that Dave indicated have been put in the Dropbox folder for June two. Uh, we're planning a special meeting for, uh, May thirty-first, Tuesday at five-thirty, to sign warrants, and as, uh, we discussed earlier, we're gonna add, uh, looking at the site plan cost at that meeting. Those will probably be the only two items on there, uh, in, in addition to the usual, um, boilerplate stuff we have to do. Um, I heard you mention that we need, uh, this is just sort of to put in on a long-term to-do list. We're gonna want to move the greater fund money to where?
The equipment fund. Uh, yeah, just because, over the years, these small contributions that were made to the greater fund, but people vote those in the, in the reserve funds to greater, so you just can't move that money and buy a truck with it. But long-term, the way we're looking at this now, we just have an equipment fund that can be used to buy that next dumb fuck. We're still saving money for graders and everything else, but we're doing it all in one pool instead of separately.
So that's something to, to keep on our to-do list for, for next March.
So that's, so that's basically, yeah, just, we had, like, plow trucks and graders and...
Yeah, it will just make it...
All these other pieces of equipment. We had separate funds for them all, so you're just putting it all in one?
I think there's like thirty-five thousand dollars in, uh, that one now. I might hear somewhere, but, no, it's not important now, but there's like thirty-five thousand dollars in, in the greater fund. That, we're not gonna need a grader for twenty-five years or so, and, uh, yeah, the grader actually has thirty-seven thousand dollars in it right now, and we have, in all, for all purposes, a new grader sitting out there, so it's gonna be quite some time till we need a grader. We'll probably go to, through three or four dump trucks before we need that.